To order roll call please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob? Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor of Police.
Here, I declare quorum present. Police stand, join pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to approve the city council minutes of March fifteenth?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments, corrections, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, I have no written communiques. We'll start mayor's report. First item, approval of Prairie Fest vendor booth policy for governmental entities and non-for-profit organizations. Do we have a motion?
Motion made.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob? Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, I will turn the microphone over to Chief Vesta.
Thanks, Mayor. If I could have Jessica Zarowski and Lisa Alamisus come up front here, please. So Jessica's a patrol officer with our police department and Lisa is a dispatcher with the Addison Consolidated Dispatch Center. We're here today, you know, each day, the men and women on the department are willing to put their lives on the line or do whatever they can to protect the rights and the lives of the citizens in town. But it's not every day that sometimes we're able to view the tangible results of that. And we're here tonight to celebrate an occasion that happened back in February where a string of events that started with a 911 call and led to an eventual, the life-saving of one of our Wooddale residents. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Freeze to kind of tell the story of what happened that morning. And you have to stand here with me. So I'm just going to wrap up what happened on the morning of February 9th, 2018 at around 6:00 in the morning. Many of you might remember that morning because it was one of our bigger snowfall events of the year, which made travel kind of hazardous, which fortunately Officer Zarowski was nearby when this call came in. At about 6:00 o'clock in the morning, a resident who was here with us today, Susan, was found lying in the snow unresponsive by a neighbor of hers. Upon checking to see if there was a problem, it was discovered that this woman was unresponsive and the male then called 911 to request the fire department. Telecommunicator Alamisus answered the 911 call and immediately began to gather important information from the distraught caller. She quickly and calmly obtained the information necessary to determine where the caller was and the seriousness of the call. As TC Alamisus was obtaining further information, she was simultaneously entering the information on this call into police and fire dispatch, creating response by both in about 30 seconds. She kept caller on the line, continuing to gather as much information as she could on the victim's condition, at the same time relaying this information to both police and fire units responding. The call was dispatched very shortly thereafter and Officer Jessica Zarowski and Officer Mike Campbell were assigned to assist the fire department. Officer Zarowski was able to arrive on the scene within 1 minute and 20 seconds of the initial call to 911. She found the caller waving her down nearby the home. I did have a chance to speak to the caller, was invited here tonight. He may or may not be here. He didn't want to be recognized, but I think he should be noted, it should be noted that, you know, he cared enough to check on this resident and it was part of saving her life. He told me he didn't want to be, take credit for what took place and told me that Officer Zarowski deserved all the credit in the world and he has never seen anything like what he saw that morning. He told me that Officer Zarowski jumped from her police car and ran to Susan's side, quickly assessing her condition and initiated CPR immediately without hesitation. He was truly amazed at her outstanding performance. As Officer Zarowski was administering CPR, Officer Campbell had arrived to assist and offered her instructions to aid her in attempts to revive Susan. Just prior to the arrival of the fire department, Susan began to show signs of life. Susan was transported by the Wooddale Fire Department to Alexander Brothers Hospital, where she was admitted and treated and eventually released. I'm very happy to say that she is going back to work Monday. As part of our recognition in this matter, I would like to start by recognizing TC Alamisus, who handled this phone call, remained calm throughout, kept control during the entire time, which aided in the information getting out to responding personnel quickly. Her actions most certainly aided in the life-saving efforts of Susan on that day. So with that... I'm now going to turn it over briefly. Is that what you said, briefly?
Yes, briefly.
To EMS coordinator Luke, who's going to talk about the CPR.
So before we actually give the award to Jessica, I just want to talk a little bit about how important CPR is. As the firefighters and as paramedics, we have this wonderful equipment, cutting-edge technology, all of this great training, but really what it comes down to is the basics. And the basics is just CPR. And what we see tonight is someone that we've saved and a family that's so grateful just by someone just doing something so basic and so important at this time. So I encourage everyone here in this room to take a CPR class, learn how to do CPR, because I think most folks think it's going to be somebody they don't know, but it may be someone that's your family, somebody that really matters to you. So Fire District does have CPR courses. You're more than welcome to call us. We're more than happy to help you. So with that, on behalf of the American Heart Association, it says presented to Jessica Zarowski in recognition of advancing the mission of the American Heart Association and emergency cardiovascular care through a courageous act and an effort to save a life.
Thanks, Luke. One more. So I want to say, you know, we receive our CPR training through our coordination with the Wooddale Fire Protection District and they've been training us for as long as I've been here and they're great partners to have in the community to make sure we're providing the best level of care. And I certainly know, once they arrive on the scene, there's a high level of care that comes along with that and with the transport to the hospital and the life-saving efforts on the way there, they're a part of this effort too and we're happy to partner with them. And, you know, it's great for the residents of Wooddale, so. After this incident happened, you know, we heard about it the next morning. We're really excited about it, but we also have a formal process. We have a police department awards committee. And that committee reviews the facts of all, any type of incident or case that might merit award and they make an independent review of whether that, you know, is worthy of whatever award that may be, and in this case, the life-saving award. And it was unanimous that this by far fit the criteria for a life-saving award. And, you know, Jessica, we're just, we're very proud of you. They say luck is one, what, preparation meets opportunity and certainly that's what happened here, so. Jessica, on behalf of the Wooddale Police Department, we hereby present you this life-saving award in appreciation of your heroic efforts in saving the life of a Wooddale resident. So congratulations. And finally, tonight, I'd like to welcome Susan's brother up. I believe he'd like to say a couple of words before we finish.
Thank you. This is why we're here, Susan.
Thank you to everyone involved. I know of a second chance at life.
Thanks again for everyone that could be here to support your fellow department employees and the fire department and also the deputy director of Addison Consolidated Dispatch for being here tonight. So congrats again, great work. And if you'd like to shake the council members on the way out, we appreciate all your hard work. So thank you.
All right, next I'd like to present the award to Natalie Rosales for entering and winning design in the 2018-2019 vehicle sticker artwork contest. Natalie was this year's artwork contest vehicle sticker contest winner, Natalie Rosales. Am I saying that correctly?
You don't bite.
Come on, come on to the podium.
You don't bite.
On behalf of the city of Wooddale, I'd like to congratulate you on your first-place entry in the city's annual vehicle sticker artwork contest. Your creativity is inspiring. Thank you for taking the time to enter and showcasing your favorite Wooddale weekend activity. Be sure to look for your artwork to be featured in the upcoming May-June issue of the city newsletter. And here is a gift card from Target for $100.
You don't want to be in the picture? Roy won't steal your purse. He's washing it, so.
Natalie would like to say just a couple of words.
I would like to say thank you. I was not sure if I wanted to enter or not, but after a while, I won and I'm like, oh my God. So thank you.
Thank you. I do have one other item. Came up at DMC. Heart Association is trying to get communities on this Tobacco 21. I don't know if anybody's heard about this. Some municipalities have passed Tobacco 21 where you cannot purchase cigarettes unless you're 21 in their community. They're asking us to pass a resolution. We cannot, even if we wanted to, we cannot pass that type of ordinance because we are not home rule. Do we want to proceed with the resolution? We'll have it put on the agenda, otherwise...
Yes, and make that motion, put it on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we just need direction on this.
Yeah.
Unless there's real strenuous objection. Next, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple items tonight. Please join us in welcoming the following new businesses to Wooddale. The Incora Group LLC is located at 655 Wheat Lane and provides brand management services and full-service warehousing functions. And Ehor Truck Repair is located at 960 Seaver Drive and is a truck repair facility. My last item, I'd like to congratulate Brad Kittleson on his 37 hard-working years and dedicated service to the city of Wooddale. He is retiring effective tomorrow. He will be missed and it was always nice to see Brad Kittleson's smiling face walking around City Hall when he'd come visit here, when he'd take a minute away from the treatment plant. So congratulations to Brad. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And thank you to Brad for all his years of service. Next, consent agenda. We have, if no objections, we have five items on the consent agenda. Entertain a motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of change order with Ehor Construction Incorporated to reduce the amount from 2017 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project in an amount of $946.26 from $191,492 to $190,545.74. Item number two, approval of final payment request to Ehor Construction Incorporated for the 2017 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project in amount not to exceed $190,545.74. Item number three, approval of change order with RW Dunhaman to reduce the amount for the fiscal year 2018 road project in an amount of $46,956.65 from $387,784.35 to $340,827.70. Item number four, approval of final payment request to RW Dunhaman for the fiscal year 2018 roads project in an amount not to exceed $46,606.51. And item number five, resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and ABC Humane Wildlife for the skunk removal grant program. Do we have a motion?
Motion made.
Alderman Wesley and Alderman Sizmarski, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, planning and zoning. Alderman Woods.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, before I call Alderman Sizmarski, on the bottom of their resolution, the final number should be December 2018, not December 2019. Alderman Sizmarski, go ahead, sorry.
Before I start, I'd like to thank City Hall for getting Matt and the gentleman at City, or the Public Works for getting on that water main very, very quick. Thank you. I have a resolution seeking approval of a contract between the city of Wooddale and Robinson Engineering for the assistance in the wastewater treatment plant in the not-to-exceed amount of $5,340 per month from April 2018 to December 2018. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It sounded like Tony was first.
Catalano. Tony.
Yes, Alderman Roy Wesley, questions?
Could you explain how we pick the engineers for which projects again? Who picks them?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
Typically, if you're referencing the RFP committee, when we send out for a specific, like work-construction-engineering project, the RFP committee consisting of some staff members and electeds then make a recommendation to the committee, the whole, then to the council. In this instance, since it's more of a staffing services, it's not really part of the RFP committee, so it's just a staff recommendation.
Who is on the RFP committee?
The RFP committee is Public Works Chair, Planning and Zoning Chair, myself, Mr. York, and Mr. Cage. And HR is Ms. Kate Buggy. And just so, just so we understand, everything goes into the drop boxes. All the aldermen are allowed to look at that and they can also make comments or recommendations when it comes up to committee. It's not a closed, open-and-seal type deal. Alderman Messina?
I just want some clarity from city manager Mermis. You said, you started saying that it was through the RFP committee, but that...
No, this was not.
But no, no, then you said, no, it was not, it was actually a staff recommendation. So which one was it?
No, what I said was, if you're asking about the RFP committee, this is who's in and that's how it's followed, but this was not part of the RFP committee.
This decision was not, okay.
Okay.
Another thing.
Go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley.
On that list that we have is 10 engineers, correct?
I believe it's 12.
Or 12.
It's been recently expanded.
Okay, so...
Go ahead, follow.
So who picks us? HR Robertson Engineering would be staff, which would be you and...
Mr. Mermis, go ahead.
Both myself and Public Works Director Matt York thought it was in the best interest of the city to go with Robinson in this instance. Who is on the list?
I understand.
Go ahead, do you have a follow?
No, that's okay.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, so I want to thank Matt York and I want to thank Jeff for jumping on a conference call. We talked about this a few days ago and I think that kind of spurred the FAQ. That answered a lot of that. I think the big thing to remember, we're starting, we're talking about starting this ethics committee, right? And I think these guys did a hell of a job, mind my French, jumping ahead of that because a lot of what we've been doing lately has been through HR Green. So I think part of the thought process was, here's Robinson Engineering. They are already doing something there and this is a chance to kind of spread it out across vendors that we work with, so that was part of it. And I would just ask those that are watching at home, I asked about the net savings. The net savings, net savings is $85,000. By, again, experimenting this process, because I think we all have the same kind of concerns, and then we said, by December, that's kind of the decision date, right? This is a trial period. So in my mind, I'm seeing this as a trial period. We can try to save a good amount of money and then we make an evaluation on, does it make sense to move forward? Or do we need to kind of go back and rethink? But from what I understand, because I questioned that and I questioned succession planning to make sure that we have people lined up, and this is something that Jeff, this is something that had been talked about for years. So that's it, just wanted to add those points.
And going back to the RFP committee, that was created specifically because, actually Alderman, Eugene Wesley and myself used to sit on council meetings and always the same engineering firms was getting all the work and why can't we split it around? So we tried to start a process where we have some electeds with staff and not always is the lowest bid picked. Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
So how many hours is HR Green going to work on this for 53, 40 per month?
It's Robinson and, go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
Yeah, so Robinson, again, they're planning on around eight hours per week at first and then we'll see if we need more, we need less. We're really utilizing them to watch the plant, use their licensing. We don't have anybody on staff with that type of license.
Go ahead, follow.
So do we have anyone close to gain those licenses? I mean, Brad Kittleson's been here for 37 years. I would think that the city would look at and say, well, he's going to retire soon or whatever and...
Mr. Mermis.
Well, that's exactly why we've talked about this plan for years and it's actually economically more feasible and saves money potentially doing it the way we're doing it. That's why we want to investigate this, to potentially save the money and get just as good of results with the licensing.
Providing it works. Again, this is a test, so no guarantees.
But we have someone there for...
Go ahead, you have a follow, Alderman Wesley, go ahead.
We have someone there for eight hours a week. So what does an employee for eight hours a week would benefit us?
Mr. Mermis.
We should all just be thankful that Public Works Director Matt York is such a hard worker that he's moving offices and he's going over there and really doing some...
He's cutting his lunch.
Cutting-edge hard work over there, making sure everybody's supervised appropriately.
Did you have a follow, Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yes. I don't remember what it was, but I think I remember. No, succession planning, right? So I guess my only question to you, Jeff, is, is there a plan? So what I hope does not happen, and I really hope this works, but come December, this does not work, what's your plan in the interim to make sure that we are lining up candidates? Because like we said, we didn't know. So to be fair, we got two weeks' notice that he was leaving, right? I know we've had five years of planning, before my time, on the board, but five years of planning. I would just ask that there is a contingency plan? If we don't have the staff on the bench that can do that, let's start looking at options as far as getting somebody with that license, if that's what we have to do.
Mr. Mermis.
Yeah, and the one thing I'll add to that, if you read the memo and you kind of read between the lines, it's... Well, not, you don't have to read between the lines, it's quite clear. We don't have the data right now we need because we haven't had our Public Works workshop. I think once we have a Public Works workshop and we find out which direction we're kind of going in with our building facilities, that'll allow us to know what type of skill set we need for a potential full-time individual if the outsourcing doesn't work.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, you had to handle.
Yeah, I'll sum this all up. The whole purpose of hiring this company is, we have to submit certain paperwork down to Springfield, these charges and all that, and that counts for our license. We don't have anyone right now that has that license. Basically, that's what it is. So paperwork that they're going to have to sign off in, that goes to EPA, discharge and our removal and all that, that's the only thing this guy's going to be doing. The employees are running the treatment plant. This guy is only there to make sure the paperwork is dotted and t and all that. It's the only thing this guy's going to be doing.
And Mr. York's going to handle the supervisory part of the project. That's why he's moving over. Any other questions on this? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, and I need a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Upstate.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Okay, that, that passes.
Second, I've got an ordinance declaring property owned by the city of Wooddale surplus for the purpose of selling. Is my motion?
Second.
Okay, hold on one second, guys. Still marking the list, I want to make sure I got it right in my notes. All right, that was Alderman Sizmarski made the motion. Gene, your second, correct, Alderman Wesley? All right, any questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yep.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's all I have, Larry.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Messina?
No report, Mayor.
Under other business, Alderman Jacob's not here. Alderman Messina, your vice chair on the airport, is anything?
Surprised to me.
Were you on the committee?
No, yeah.
Was there anything or nothing at this time?
Nothing, no report, no report.
Thank you. Under Stormwater Commission, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
As fair, I have one, Saw Creek Cleanup will be on April 14th at 9:00 AM to noon. They meet at Lionswood Park, right there on Irving Park Road. So whoever would like to take part in that, it is from 9:00 AM to noon, Saw Creek Cleanup.
Thank you. Next, approval of list of bills. Alderman Messina?
One report, Mayor. Approval for a list of bills dated April 5th, 2018 in the amount of $628,107.47. That is my motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions?
Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Page 79, A5 Group Economic Development Project for 1825.
Who's taking that one? Mr. Mermis.
I believe the A5 Group is an advertisement group for one of the various trade shows we go to, for print advertisement.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
What do you mean, print advertisement? We did that booklet that was so much money, and what trade show are you...
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
We do a lot of booklets and a lot of advertisements. If you're interested in this one, I could put a copy, an email, or in the report and get you the specific one.
Sure, I would like to see it. And how many does it, so it's...
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
It's for the trade show itself, for the booth.
Mr. Mermis.
I don't know the specifics of this one, but I know it's an advertisement. We could do it for individual magazines, we could do it for trade shows. I don't know what this specific one is, I just know that this one was an advertisement.
Okay, I'd just like to know how many distribute to them.
Okay. Any other questions? Alderman Messina?
I should have followed up to that. Had we not asked, maybe I missed it, but had we not asked for you to attach that to the manager's report?
Mr. Mermis.
Yeah, you did, for the specific ones when they come up. So as the questions come up, we gave the exact stats for the last one, with the how many people it reached, and the picture and all that, so...
It'd only be the ones we asked for, though. Not, okay, that's fair.